Second Edition Phase Two, as well as subsequent amending resolutions are included. Lastly, accepted petitions for paving sewer and drainage and water improvements for Phase One of Bel Air Lakes, as well as required resolutions are listed. And there any questions for staff or Gilmore and Bell concerning the consent agenda? And it's long, but I'm glad it is.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Welch. Any discussion? Here now, I'll move on to motion or vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Next item is item seven, discussion approval appropriations ordinance. So major expenses for reporting period of $220,000 for operation and maintenance, as well as debt service for the Chisaf Creek Utility Authority, $200,000 for engineering services on three projects, and $44,000 for waste connections for monthly trash service, and $155,000 for bond payments. Any questions concerning the appropriations ordinance? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-two.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Dean. Any discussion? If there are none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. So item eight is seating of newly elected governing body members. So with the election results official from Sedgwick County, I was re-elected for to a four-year term as mayor. Emily Hamburg and Tyler Dean were each elected to a four-year term as city council members. So if Emily and Tyler would join me at the podium, our city clerk will swear his hand for our new terms.
Okay. Hi, Mayor. So.
You want to sign that first or do this first?
We can do this first.
Okay.
Okay, if you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. Say your name.
Aye, Jim Benage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the ordinances of the City of Bel Air, Kansas.
And the ordinances of the City of Bel Air, Kansas.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of my position.
I will faithfully perform the duties of my position.
For the City of Bel Air.
For the City of Bel Air.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have to sign now, right?
Thank you. Hi, Ms. Emily Hamburg. Do you please raise your right hand? Aye. Please state your name.
Aye, Emily Hamburg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the ordinances of the City of Bel Air, Kansas.
And the ordinances of the City of Bel Air, Kansas.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of my position.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of my position.
For the City of Bel Air, to the best of my ability.
For the City of Bel Air, to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Please sign.
I filled this out then signed. Okay. Just a council member.
Okay, welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So now we have a new term. We so we need to call the roll again for the new city council.
Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean.
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
And Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. So move on to city requested appearances. We have no city requested appearances for this this evening, so we'll move on to public hearings. We have a I have a card for Mr. Jeff Treadwell, Treadway. Mr. Treadway, if you'd please approach the podium and give us your name and address, and three minutes to speak to the council.
Okay. That's on or not? Can you hear me?
Yes, and it's important because these are broadcast, so, okay.
Okay, so thank you, Mayor. City council members, appreciate your time here. My name is Jeff Treadway, and my address I live at is eighty-four ninety-three East Deer Run.
Guess it wasn't on. Okay. I guess my voice travels. Before I get started, real quick, I want to give a shout out because I have a number of fellow Deer Run neighbors that have come tonight to show support, and their concern too, as well as the topic I'm going to speak about, so. And I'm sorry, I feel a little apprehensive, only because I know I only have three minutes, and so I'm just going to read right through this, because I want to make sure this content is presented to you. Okay? And you each have copies of that, by the way. Okay, so I'm here to represent the Deer Run neighborhood in our deep concern regarding the traffic and safety in our neighborhood. Deer Run Street in our neighborhood has increasingly become a dangerous thoroughfare. The street is used every day from adjoining neighborhoods as a shortcut to and from Rock Road. Excessive speeding and traffic have created unsafe conditions that threaten our neighborhood's safety and peace every day. Incidents that have happened in just the past year alone include running over a fire hydrant, destroying a series of mailboxes, and cutting through and damaging a neighbor's lawn multiple times. Walking through our neighborhood has even become stressful and somewhat dangerous. Actions that the residents in our neighborhood have taken over the past few months on this include posting signs to slow down, parking cars near street corners and bends, and requesting patrols by the Bel Air police. As a matter of fact, the Bel Air police suggested to one of our neighbors to park their car near the end of the corner of a street to help reduce the speeding and unsafe driving. Unfortunately, none of these measures have reduced the unsafe traffic in our neighborhood. As residents of Deer Run, we are deeply concerned about the continued and escalating unsafe conditions we experience each and every day. The problem isn't just an inconvenience, it poses real dangers to all of us. Children playing in the street, pedestrians taking walks, mowing the lawn, getting the mail, taking out the trash, or simply just enjoying outdoors at our homes at risk every day due to this reckless driving. Moreover, as surrounding neighborhoods continue to grow, these unsafe conditions will only worsen if left unaddressed. Data from the National Highway Safety Administration has shown that over fifty percent of traffic accidents happen in our own neighborhood. To curb and reduce these unsafe conditions, and to be consistent with similar traffic issues and structures erected in Wichita and in Bel Air, we propose to install a street termination near the corner of Rock Spring and Deer Run Streets that join the two properties. This measure would significantly reduce the traffic flow through our neighborhood while discouraging excessive speeding by drivers using Deer Run as a shortcut. This still allows the fire department, police, EMS, and other emergency vehicles unrestricted free access to Deer Run properties, and if needed, EMS vehicles could still make their way through the street termination. They're designed that way. This structure would not this restriction or this structure would not restrict the surrounding neighborhood entrances and exits, as there are multiple entries to these neighborhoods from the Fifty-third Street. One hundred percent participation in each household in Deer Run supported and signed this petition, which, Mayor, you have a copy of only. If you want to share that with your other members, I don't think our Deer Run residents have a problem with that, but just to start off, I wanted to do that.
Yeah, okay. Yes, we 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 each have everyone has a copy of this. They don't have the sign the signature page, but I do have that. And what I will do with this, I will pass this to our city attorney and ask that our staff get together and look at this proposal and see what we can do. This will have to be work with what our city police and city engineer to make sure that we don't create other problems by solving one problem.
Sure.
So try to avoid that, but I think we'll take we will certainly take a look at this.
Yeah, because I understand perhaps what I'm suggesting isn't the best idea, but to be consistent with what other structures I've personally seen in Wichita, which, by the way, the addenda in there has pictures and shows a couple of examples. And as a matter of fact, one of them is in Elk Creek right over here that's like quarter of a mile away.
Yeah.
So we hope that's to us, we feel that's the best way to help.
Well, we appreciate.
Improve the safety in our neighborhood.
We appreciate your comment and let us know about the situation, and we we now have the documentation, and we will we will get staff looking into this, okay?
Okay, and you will respond and let us know that as well.
Probably our city attorney, I won't say who, probably our city attorney, city manager, somebody will respond to you, okay?
Yeah, okay. Great, okay. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, appreciate Mr. Treadwell's information. Are there any other citizens that wanted to speak to council tonight? I know there's a lot of them here, but I don't have any other cards, so. If there are none, we'll move on to a public hearing. So a public hearing, at our November twenty-first meeting, council approved publication of notice of a public hearing related to the twenty-twenty-three budget amendment to be held tonight. So if anyone here is here to speak on the proposed budget amendment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the minutes, and speak clearly in the microphone. Comments are limited to three minutes, so if you want to speak about the the budget amendment, this is your opportunity. And I don't see anybody wanting to come and speak about budget amendments, so if if no one does, I'll entertain a motion to close the the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
Make a motion that we close the budget hearing.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Okay. Cut that out a little bit, but okay. So now we'll move on to city council member reports. Mr. Dean, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, thank you. First of all, I just wanted to say I hope everybody enjoyed their Thanksgiving holiday. I know our family enjoyed ours. I also wanted to thank the city staff for putting on the the volunteer dinner this evening. I think that's really a good thing to do every year. We have so many good folks in our community that serve on our committees and boards, and it's a small token, all right? We can't ever repay all the time they spend volunteering, but it's a small token and a great time to have fellowship with others that are working in our city to help improve it. So I appreciate everybody that was there and everybody helped put that on. And then I also wanted to thank the chamber, Bel Air Chamber put on a chamber holiday mixer, so I wanted to thank Gary O'Neil, Kim, the executive director, and their board, and all their efforts this year to help grow the chamber, and looking forward to see what they'll accomplish in twenty-twenty-four. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Mix up a little bit. Ms. Hamburg, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. Back in August, when we had our national night out, I spoke to the Sedgwick County Emergency Management folks, and they hold a few times a year, they hold a citizens' emerging emergency response team training. It's twenty hours over over a weekend, and so I took their their class they offered over the weekend on Friday and Saturday and Sunday up at the Fire District One headquarters in Park City. It was it was really good, and the big the the premise of it is, what if we had a tornado? What if we had a flood? What if we had something where first responders could not get to you immediately? Do you have some basic medical skills and just just some 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 assets in your toolbox that you could not just help yourself, but maybe help your neighbors if there was a situation where that was required? So I would I thought it was worth my time. It was nice to be up at the Fire District Headquarters. They they did part of the training, which, of course, were part of Fire District One, so just wanted to plug that, and if you're interested, there's no volunteer commitment. It's really just an opportunity for you to gain gain skills at no cost to you that might come in handy down the road. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm glad you attended that. I hope you never have to use those skills, but I'm glad you did that. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Welch.
I just want to make a comment for the benefit of the citizens. One of the things that always irritated me about city council meetings when I watched them online was the really long executive sessions without having any idea what was going on. And in the last few months, we've had quite a few. We're going to address one of the things tonight that we have spent five or six hours in an executive session on, which was the resignation of our city manager and how and who would replace him. Those are both items coming up later, but I just wanted people to know that, you know, we we spent a lot of time dealing with it, and it was stuff that we could not do in public, such as interviews and things like that. So just so you know now, part of that time at least was spent.
We hope productive.
We hope so.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
I have no report tonight, thank you.
Mr. David.
No report, thank you.
All right, very good, thank you. So I have a short report, so I want to give a shout out to our Public Works people who worked over Thanksgiving weekend to clear nine inches of snow from our roads, and that was great to have dedicated staff to get those roads drivable and conditioned, so thank you for the extra dedication. On Saturday, December second, I did attend the Bel Air Christmas Festival here at City Hall. Very good turnout. Big thank yous to sponsors and all who helped put this together, not limited to the Bel Air's Chamber of Commerce, Bel Air Lions Club, Bel Air staff, including our rec staff, so great job everybody did there. Yesterday, I did attend the Bel Air Chamber of Commerce Second Annual Appreciation Mixer, and that was so that was felt very well attended, too. We actually had some Park City folks there, too, as well, so that was good that we're spreading our our word a little bit, so that's good. And this evening, just before this meeting, we held our annual appreciation dinner that Mr. Dean had talked about for our committee volunteers. It was a good turnout, really appreciate it. We have twenty-two people who volunteer for various committees. In addition to the regular committees, we also had another ten people volunteer for the Aurora Park gravel task force. So thank you for all those who helped use the various help us in using the various committees, and appreciate staff for their work in putting that all together for us. Please continue to support businesses, long wood lawn during the construction. I'll now ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most recently, we've been working on code enforcement, more especially lately. Civilians have been coming in, sharing observations regarding specifically nuisance vehicles. They might be parked on a the front yard, the side yard. It could be up on jacks, the tires missing, there could be no registration, perhaps like significant parts of the vehicles are missing. Neighbors are driving by, they're seeing these things, and it's upsetting them. They're sharing it with us, I'm meeting with the code enforcement officer, we're going through our code, we're making sure that we have all of the observations that we have that we need, and we're making contact with residents. We're educating, we're sharing information, we're sending courtesy letters and abatement letters, but right now, that's what we're working on, and the good news is, we've met with three different civilians in the last week and a half, and one of them has already complied, so that's great. I think with just a little bit more information, that's going to be doing better, but I wanted to at least give the council an update that we are seeing a little bit more of an increase in those, so we're trying to take them on one by one.
Very good, we appreciate you getting that, taking care of it. The city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a an official report tonight, as I was helping staff with the volunteer dinner tonight, so I didn't have time to put anything together, but I do appreciate you and the council recognizing that our city staff do things that like assisting with the volunteers dinner, the holiday open house, that really is outside of their typical duties, and and they they volunteer to do that, and we appreciate that. So that's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
Very good, thank you. So move on to ordinance resolutions and final action. So item A is adopt the twenty-twenty-three City of Bel Air budget amendment, and due to expenses approved by the governing body during twenty-twenty-three expenditures in the water, sewer, and general funds will exceed the twenty-twenty-three adopted and published amounts. So each fund has received revenues in excess of budget amounts and have substantial reserves. As a result, a budget amendment is required by the State of Kansas, and Ted Henry is here to answer any questions. Mr. Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. You summed it up pretty pretty wise about every everything before you, and this budget amendment's been passed by the council, and we've worked it in the twenty-twenty-four budget cycle. This just confirms what we've done in the year. It's more of a trailer bill so that we comply with state regulations, so any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to adopt the twenty-twenty-three City of Bel Air budget amendments as published.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David.
They might be parked on a, the front yard, the side yard. It could be up on jacks, the tires missing, there could be no registration. Perhaps like significant parts of the vehicles are missing. Neighbors are driving by, they're seeing these things and it's upsetting them. They're sharing it with us. I'm meeting with the code enforcement officer. We're going through our code. We're making sure that we have all of the observations that we have, that we need. And we're making contact with residents. We're educating. We're sharing information. We're sending courtesy letters and abatement letters. But right now, that's what we're working on. And the good news is we've met with three different civilians in the last week and a half. And one of them has already complied. So that's great. I think with just a little bit more information, that's going to be doing better. But I wanted to at least give the council an update that we are seeing a little bit more of an increase in those. So we're trying to take them on one by one.
Very good. We appreciate you getting that. Take care. The city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a, an official report tonight as I was helping staff with the volunteer dinner tonight. So I didn't have time to put anything together. But I do appreciate you and the council recognizing that our city staff do things that, like assisting with the volunteers dinner, the holiday open house that really is outside of their typical duties. And, and they, they volunteer to do that and we appreciate that. So that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. So move on to ordinance, resolutions and final action. So item A is adopt the 2023 City of Bellar budget amendment. And due to expenses approved by the governing body during 2023 expenditures in the water, sewer and general funds will exceed the 2023 adopted and published amounts. So each fund has received revenues in excess of budgeted amounts and have substantial reserves. As a result, a budget amendment is required by the state of Kansas and Ted Henry is here to answer any questions. Mr. Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. You summed it up pretty, pretty wise about everything before you. And this budget amendment's been passed by the council and we've worked it in the 2024 budget cycle. This just confirms what we've done in the year. It's more of a trailer bill so that we comply with state regulations. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to adopt the 2023 City of Bellar budget amendments as published.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes five to zero. Item B is consider electing a council president. The term, so each year, the city council selects a council member to serve as council president. Council president presides over meetings and represents the governing body when I am not available. So Justin Smith has been council president since 2021. Would somebody like to serve in this role?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I think Justin does a fantastic job. So I'll be supporting him to stay the council president.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'm happy to do it again. To be honest, our mayor has a near perfect attendance record, so it's almost no work. I'm also completely happy to support any of you in that role. So I will not be offended if somebody else would like to take that on.
There have been times I've been out of town, so you've had to step in a couple of times.
A couple of times, yeah.
Not very often.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith. Or Mr. David, I'm sorry.
I'd like to motion to elect Councilmember Smith as council president for 2024.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. David and a second by Mr. Dean to elect Councilmember Smith for the president, 2024 council president. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. You're stuck another year. So move on to item C. I think our city manager has some issues he would like to discuss with item C. So Mr. Lasher.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this, this is a, street repairs and especially using asphalt this time of year is not easy. We've got a couple areas where, yep, that's the wrong slide. Couple areas that we, the staff have identified that need some work. One's on Webb Road. Another is where they had to do a major repair. And so Public Works looked for bids to do those repairs. The difficult thing is they, they always try to get at least three bids when they can. The difficult thing is that the asphalt plants close. And so it's difficult to get contractors and I think that reflects the price as well. Because we were a bit surprised by the cost of this. The other issue that came about on this specific line item is, you may remember when we first put the, the agenda out, we didn't have a reply or we didn't have a cost from Kansas paving. They were requested to have that into us by Friday, by noon, before we were wanting to get the, the agendas out. Ended up getting it to us yesterday. So we did add it. The concern that we have is that there is the potential that they saw the agenda, since they sent their bid in yesterday. So given the fact that it's, Kansas paving is the low bid, but they actually sent theirs in after the agenda was published. Given the fact that it's difficult to get asphalt and the cost that we're seeing here seem high for the, what we want done. I talked with our Public Works Director and asked if we, if, if, if council would deny all, all of these bids and give us till after the first of the year to, or even maybe a little bit later for the asphalt plants to start back up and then see if we can get a better price, if they could handle these two issues just internally for a couple of months. And they said they could. So because of all those issues, my recommendation would be to deny the bids tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I did also have a question on this item before hearing or knowing any of that. I was curious about the, the idea of staff potentially looking at some of the asphalt that may need some repair, temporary repair on 45th between Edgemore and Woodlawn. Where we've seen a lot of, obviously we're not going to place the whole road, but if it made any sense to add that in to sort of make the project a little larger, to make it so it can get more competitive pricing. I know there's some areas in there that need a lot of love, so that was just going to be a suggestion I had. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welch.
For city administrator, what kind of bids were we expecting? I don't remember seeing anything that said what our estimate was.
Well, in these situations, we don't have the engineer do any design work and they're the ones that will come up with the engineer's estimate. So we, we just, and it was just the staff opinion that these costs seem pretty high for the two areas that we want to done, based on costs that we paid in the past. And so that's, that's why there's no engineer's estimate. It was just based on our experience.
Okay. I, I doubt that Kansas paving paid any attention to our agenda, given how much lower their bid is. If it had been a couple of thousand or less, I'd have thought, well, maybe they're just undercutting. But at 14,000 less than anybody else, I, I don't think they looked.
And that could very well be.
But I do, I do agree with the city manager's assessment there to assure fairness. It probably is most appropriate to deny these bids tonight and go out and redo this at a later time to make sure we have a fair competitive bids. I don't think they did anything wrong. I don't.
Yes, we're not, not, we're not accusing them in any way. It's just the appearance that it could happen.
So I'll entertain a motion if somebody wants to make one.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to deny the bids above.
I think you just said deny the bids.
Deny all of the bids.
I think that's, that's fine.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg and a second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Four, four to one with Mr. Welch's opposed. And that motion passes four to one. All right, moving on to item D. This is a bid for 37th Street valve replacement. And I think Ms. Anne Stevens is here to talk about this valve replacement. Ms. Stevens.
So we, when we were working on the backflows that you had already approved at the pump house, we were wanting to make sure that we can shut down the pump house in order to do the valve replacement without too much additional work. We've been going out and exercising the valves to make sure that they have a good seal. While we were doing that, we noticed that the valve at 37th and Woodlawn that feeds the Bellar Line from Wichita is not working. So I think they started to turn it and then they just kind of kept turning it and kept turning it and kept turning it and nothing happened. So in working with the city of Wichita, they are requiring us to replace that valve at our costs. So we, they did say that they would allow one of us to utilize one of their emergency contractors that they have on contract to help us get a better price for this work. They are also ordering, or they will give us the valve that will be used for this project. So we, so that the emergency contractor that they talked to initially was Donlinger. Prior to publishing any bids or getting anybody out, we also contacted McCullough, Mies and UMC. UMC is also holds an emergency contract with Wichita, so their price is a bit lower. McCullough does not, so I think, I believe that's why they're a little bit higher. But Marty did meet with all three, actually all four contractors on site, talked it over. Mies contacted me and then said, you know, we understand you already have the three bids to go to council. We're going to decline this time, but please keep us informed for future projects. So that's where we're at. In your packet is a drawing of what was given to each contractor. This was provided by the city of Wichita. That's all we know. It's been in the ground for a very long time. There's different bends and valves and different sizes. And we are not 100% confident that once we get down there, we're not going to find something else. But this is, the, the bids are those companies' best guesses of what they're going to be, what they're going to encounter and what it's going to take to get this work done. Donlinger is very familiar with the area. They not only did our water and sewer relocations for the Woodlawn project, they also did a reconstruction, or a construction of a new water line for the city of Wichita in the same general area. So they're very familiar with the area, very familiar with what's underground. They do a lot of work for Wichita, so kind of understand how that process works. So that's what, kind of in a nutshell, what we have before you. We are still getting water from the city of Wichita. There is another connection about 39th Street. It's a much smaller connection. I believe it's an eight, maybe a 10 inch connection. So we are still getting water. It takes a lot longer for us to get our towers filled and get the water that we need from Wichita. Definitely do not want to go through this in the summer when we need everything we can get. So that's, that's where we're at. It's going to, from approval from the city council, it will take Donlinger between three to four weeks. It's going to take them about three days of actual work in the ground. The rest of it is a preparation work as well as a cleanup work and getting the pavement put back, the cure time on the pavement. And they said that they could probably start in, I believe, a week or two, maybe sooner.
So, and I appreciate what you're saying, but, but what you said just triggered something in my mind about that. They just rebuilt that road not 10 years ago. Did they not know what was in the, underneath that road at that time?
They did not dig up this particular area. This is just, so we've got the curve that goes from Woodlawn to 37th Street. It is just south of that curve. So we did not, unfortunately, we did not dig up that, this particular area. So we don't know specifically what's down there. But yeah, I mean, they were, they were all over. This is on the west side of the road.
Is it on the Dillon side of 37th or on, on the bank side?
It's on the bank side. It's just south of that curve, but this is older pavement. So, I mean, and they may have done it 10 years ago. I'm not sure. But yeah, it wasn't done recently.
Okay, I'm just surprised that we don't know what's, what's there.
Yeah, and they, they have a pretty detailed drawing that we have provided to you in your packet of kind of what's there. They've got some lengths, but you just, when something's been in the ground for five to 10 years plus, you just don't quite know what the status of everything is.
Oh, yeah.
Sometimes they wrap it in plastic, sometimes they don't, and you just don't know what's going to be down there. So I am just, as a word of warning, it may not be exactly as it seems. We certainly hope so. We're certainly not asking for anything different, but I just, just as a word of warning.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for?
Mr. Mayor, I did have one question. So the valve that the city is, City of Wichita is, the line that this valve is on is Bellar, a Bellar Water Line.
That is correct.
That's being fed off of a main from the City of Wichita.
That is correct.
So the valve technically is our valve to replace. So the city is donating? Like, how's that working? Is the City of Wichita giving us a valve? Are we buying the valve? How is that working?
The City of Wichita said that they would provide a valve. I specifically asked that question to Matt Townsend, who's the director of water distribution, and he said, we will provide the valve. There was never a question of payment, because I specifically asked, is this included in the Donlinger cost? Is this something that's going to be built to the separately? No, we are going to provide the valve. I said, okay, thank you. I'm not going to touch it any further.
Yeah, I wouldn't argue with that deal.
And then on the water line itself, are, are the contractors comfortable that they have the parts that if there is something like a bend or a piece of pipe, or are they fairly confident that they have some of those parts and we're not going to dig it up and then be waiting on parts for months? Like, just to, has that been double checked with?
Donlinger is very comfortable with what they have and the procedure to redo this. Public Works Director Marty has done a lot of this work prior to being, working for the city, and he's always very cautious. And so he just wants to make sure that the council as well as the citizens understand that in the off chance, I'm saying three days for the actual work, I'm saying about a month for, but you just never know until you get down there. So with the best light plans, we're, we're doing the best we can to anticipate, however.
Yep.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Smith.
Yeah, just a question on the timing. You said it'd be a few weeks for Donlinger potentially to get to this. Is that also true with UMC?
We did not specifically ask UMC.
It, based on what I was hearing, it seems like this is fairly urgent to get this resolved.
Yeah.
And there is a cost difference between Donlinger and UMC. But if the time periods were significantly different, I might wonder if that's something that we would entertain. That's the reason that I was asking.
Sure. And I don't think there's going to be much of a, a difference in time. It's all just fitting it into their schedule. Donlinger thought they may be able to get to it sooner, but they weren't going to promise.
Okay.
Ms. Hamburg.
I was just gonna, it looks like on this picture and with it being a water line, it's far enough west. We're not going to have any issues with them being over on Woodlawn or 37th that we're going to have to shut any roads down. They'll be off the road, right?
No, it's going to be right in the road. So a lane of 37th will need to be shut down.
Of 37th, okay. Thanks.
They're, they're not going to get into Woodlawn.
Don't touch Woodlawn.
That's not a through lane. That's the right turn lane. Is that correct?
That would be right.
Just turns into those properties there, the bank and the rental car and that.
Yeah. There will likely be some traffic control on Woodline at the intersection just to prepare you for not turning directly right. You'll have to go up and around. But I have not seen a specific traffic control plan yet.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Welch.
I just want to clarify for everybody. This is not the same as the backflow preventer we just took care of last month, correct?
It's correct.
Okay. No, because when I first read that, I had that thought and then I looked at it closer and, but for somebody else.
Yeah. No, the backflow preventer that we talked about last month, that is actually in our pump house located at the Public Works facility. This is located at the corner of 37th and Woodlawn.
A block or two south.
Correct. No, fair question.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Make the motion to accept the bid from Donlinger in the amount of 42,750 for the 37th Street valve replacement and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. David, a second by Mr. Dean. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Move on to item E. This is a consideration of ordinance for sewer sanitary conveyance system. So Bernson McDonald has was hired to revise and expand the city's wastewater pretreatment program. And the representatives from Bernson McDonald presented a proposed draft ordinance at the November workshop. Suggestions from the workshop were incorporated into the draft version included in the packet. And Becky with Bernson McDonald is here to answer any questions. So if you please come to the podium and we can ask questions. And I did have a minor change. I asked for her, after I saw the packet was released, and I don't know that that got put into the packet. But if you could elaborate on what that is.
So luckily, Bellar is blessed with somebody that knows a lot about NIST standards. And on section 5D, he, the mayor recommended it be changed from language that says, using the NIST criteria to ensure accuracy, rather than saying that, because really the NIST, the mayor accurately pointed out, does not have criteria. So that will, the language will be changed from, "All devices used to measure wastewater flow and quality shall be calibrated with precision and frequency mutually agreed to between the city and the user." And this is the change, "Using measurement standards traceable to the NIST to ensure accuracy." So there will, the criteria of what will be struck and measurement standards and traceability will be included in that section. And I think that's a, a good choice.
Okay, thank you. So we've talked about this at workshop, reviewed this, some changes. And I think all the changes have been incorporated that were, were requested, I think.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns about these, this proposed ordinance?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
One of the big, I had kind of two concerns when we discussed this in workshop. One was kind of the right of entry section. It seemed pretty broad to me and it didn't have any controls that I might expect for, you know, somebody to be entitled to enter the private property of a business or an individual. And so I'd asked about that and then I'd also And so I'd asked about that, and then I'd also kind of asked around controls from, you know, a lot being put on the city engineer in terms of this, the city engineer, as it originally read, would be responsible for identifying the issue, then inspecting the facility to determine the issue, and then potentially issuing a fine, and then potentially serving on the appeal board if they opposed the fine. And there was just a lot of responsibility that was solely on the city engineer there with a lot, without a lot of checks and balances. As I was kind of looking through this, I didn't see a lot of those concerns mitigated. Could you maybe just help me understand how you intended to address that?
Sure, we did change the language slightly. First of all, we, we discussed that, you know, it's a privilege for a user to be connected to the City of Bel Air collection system. And part of that privilege or private, that responsibility is to allow, first of all, compliance, and then, secondly, to allow authorized users. And a city engineer or his or her designees would be allowed to enter that based on an issue that may be happening in the collection system. There was also, we did take this city engineer out of the public hearing board. That will include somebody from city council. It will include somebody from your utilities advisory board, is that right? And as well as public works, and then somebody from your planning department. So, so we took the engineer out of that, since, since they would be the ones that would maybe identify the issue and recommend, you know, any type of enforcement. But it would be if, if the user disagrees with that enforcement action and requests a hearing, the city engineer would not be at that hearing.
Okay, that's helpful. With the right-of-entry, if the city engineer or their designee goes in and does an inspection, is there any sort of record that's created as a part of that? Any official record that says this, this thing occurred? This is why it occurred? This was the basis for that? Is there anything that, that documents that as part of this policy?
So in the, if you look in the, in the enforcement, the remedies in there, there, there's documentation how to get from like point A to point B. So first one is there's like a notice of violation, so that would be a record. If there was something that was causing immediate harm to the, to the collection system or to the wastewater plant, yes, there would have to be some type of documentation that was occurring. And, and that would be, because that would be in the ordinance itself, is that you would note that interference passed through and then respond to the user.
So that, that would come into play if there was something that was found? If there was not something found, there would be no record at that point?
So if there, so if there was something that there was this, like a, an investigation?
Yeah.
I would think there would be a written record of the investigation. City, and I'm gonna go back to my old job, City of Wichita. We, we documented any of our investigative actions, and I wouldn't see that that would be unusual for the City of Bel Air to undertake.
What I'm trying to imagine is kind of the worst-case scenario. We have somebody who's not the great city engineer that we have today and not the great staff that we have today. And they decide that they really don't like business B or C, and they say, "Hey, that, because I don't like business B here in Bel Air, I'm going to go, because you exercise the privilege of connecting to our wastewater system, I'm going to come and perform an inspection on your business just to see if I can find anything to cite you for, and I'm going to do that every day or every week or every month." And there's no judge that is having to issue an order to allow them to go do that. There's not necessarily a record that's created documenting what the reasonable basis was for them going and conducting that inspection. Just seems like there's a potential for an abuse there, that I'm trying to understand how that would be mitigated through these policies.
I think it would be, you know, a very overzealous employee, as you, you spoke to. And I think it would be an unusual situation, not that it couldn't happen, it could. But that employee also has to answer to the city engineer. The city engineer has to answer to the city manager. City manager answers to council. So I feel like with that much oversight, that you wouldn't, you know, have a rogue employee out there doing those things on their own. I, again, that, I just think that would be a very rare circumstance. That's my thoughts. I, you know, sure it could happen, but I don't, I think it'd be very unusual. And this is very, this, this type of language is very standard throughout the United States, throughout all the POTWs that have pretreatment programs. So it's not anything that is just an isolated to City of Bel Air.
No, I appreciate that. For, from my personal perspective, making sure personal privacy is protected, making sure, you know, the government doesn't just have the right to go enter people's property for no reason is, you know, very important to me. And so that just kind of stood out as I read it. There's an entire, an entire section that's right to entry that just kind of stood out to me, so. Wanted to make sure we discuss that.
The only thing is, is that what you don't want is, is something to be discharged as causing harm to the public, and there's no way to control that. So if I was gonna err on one side or the other, I would err on the side of being able to go in and try to fix the problem.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it be fairly straightforward to add another paragraph there to note the documentation required, just so it was transparent?
Absolutely, yeah. I'd be happy to, to include a paragraph like that. Just probably a sentence or two, looking at the documentation must be done, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
Yeah, I think, I, I thought about what Becky said. You know, you're always balancing this. You know, you could have a rogue employee go in and that, and Councilmember Smith's concerns are my concerns as well. But you need a quick way to deal with an issue that's harming the public when you have somebody hooked up. So I think Councilmember David's recommendation would probably satisfy me there so that there is a trail that you could follow. I think, I think I could support that with that in there.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I think that would be great, so long as it cap, also cap, specifically captured the reason and the basis for why the entry was conducted. Not just that it happened, but this was the why. I think that's important to be part of the public record.
I think those are good, good recommendations. Do we want to make a motion to, to that effect tonight, or do we want to revisit this at another meeting?
I, I think in all fairness, we should allow it to be updated and then voted on the next meeting.
Okay. So is that a motion?
Do we need a motion? I, I guess we could table it.
Take motion table.
I can make a motion to table the ordinance until the next meeting pending revisions.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mr. Welch to table, a second by Mr. Smith, and that will not require a roll call or vote because it is a tabling and not an adoption. So I would just call the vote, uh, voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item F. So this is adopting an order, changing zoning classification. So at the November meeting, the Planning Commission heard a request to rezone certain property from R4 single-family to R5 multifamily and held a public hearing. This plat is commonly known as Chapel Landing 8th Edition. After much consideration of the golden factors, the Planning Commission voted six to zero to adopt the findings of fact by staff and recommend approval by the city council. Our city engineer is here to answer any questions.
So this area was, held a bit of concern for neighboring residents in the Chapel Landing Irongate subdivision to the south. Their concerns were primarily lot size. They didn't want smaller lots abutting their larger homes. They were concerned about property values. And they were concerned about digging into the trees that separate the Irongate subdivision from this Chapel Landing 8th. They were also concerned about fencing. The developer, Jay Russell, did meet with mult, with several representatives of the Irongate subdivision. In fact, one of them came to the Planning Commission to thank Jay for taking the time to meet with them and ease their concerns. So with those considerations, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the zoning change. Jay did mention that he would be, that he's intending to build single-family homes at this air, at this residence, get subdivision mixed up. But he's wanting the, the denser zoning because he wants to do smaller lots. He has found that people are not wanting to maintain the larger lots, sprinkle the water, mow the grass, et cetera, et cetera. They want these smaller lots. We don't have a zoning classification that fits that smaller lot, single-family residential usage. So there is the multifamily in there, but the intent is for the single family.
And this is the red area?
It's, it's both the red and the green. The red is a snapshot of our current zoning map. And so it shows the area, the zoning around the red. And then the green is just the location map. And if you have any questions, I'm here. Chris Rose from Baughman is here representing the applicant.
And that buds up against Woodlawn, is that right, on, on the?
That is correct. So the north triangle piece of that property is the corner of 53rd and Woodlawn.
Okay. All right, good, thank you.
And that north piece of land was smaller housing too, wasn't it?
I'm sorry?
The, to the northwest of the red, that triangle up there, we've rezoned a while back, I believe.
That is correct.
But I can't remember what it was. It was a smaller zone or something?
It would be the same zone, and I believe that was duplex-y lots. Okay, duplex, single, oh, single-family.
So it'd be the same type of neighborhood?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I was gonna ask a question along those lines, because it's the same thing. It's a bit of a risk, though, because we've rezoned it where they would still have the right to put in duplexes if they wanted to, if something changed. Because there's no PUD that we would have another checkpoint along the way, is that right?
That is correct.
Is there, I was thinking, we set our zoning classifications, right? Would it be worth having an in-between for these smaller lots that are popular now without having to go all the way to R5? Is that something we should consider?
That is something that the Planning Commission has talked about multiple times. And with our previous attorney, Ms. Kelly, that's something that we had talked about doing. We just, we didn't have the time to get it done. But that is definitely something that would be a good thing for us to look at. The Planning Commission Chairman, James Schmidt, had actually brought up several, some proposed language, and the Planning Commission at that time didn't really want to take a look at it, but they agreed that it was important, something that they wanted to have done.
Yeah, I, I agree with Ms. Hamburg. We could probably come up with an R4A or something that specified a smaller lot size.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
In the past, have we not done R4 with PUDs in order to accomplish the same thing?
Not that I recall.
I thought we adjusted setbacks and things like that.
Not that I recall. The one thing that one of the engineers told me with a different company is these single-family lots are almost too small to put a duplex on, because with duplexes, you generally want a little bit wider lots. So that's kind of one, it's not really a failsafe, but it's one comfort for citizens. But they're also coming up with new creative duplexes. We've got some coming in on Arthur Heights, where you've got one unit on the bottom and one unit on the top. So it still doesn't strictly prohibit the duplexes.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I also had another question in relation to just traffic safety. So I looked at the plot or the proposed drive. It's like a through road, so there's two ways in or out. With Isley being there and just, are, are we, do we have any concerns? Do you, as the city engineer, have any concerns with the amount of traffic in the area, with the school traffic and, and the potential of needing a traffic light at 53rd now because of adding additional roads out onto Woodlawn right there?
That, that is a very fair question. That is not something that has been delved into very much. That will come more with the plating of the property.
Gotcha.
Chris, do you have anything to add to that? Okay.
And then to go along with that is just a, you know, I think as we continue to grow, it's not unique to this property, but the, the safety factor of not just having traffic lights, but having safe ways of cross, crossing, even if we don't have a traffic light, and then sidewalks. I mean, this is another community that's gonna have, I don't know how many homes it was in there, but we're gonna have a lot of people that are potentially walking along Woodlawn. There's not a sidewalk on that side, so I just don't want to throw that out there as a comment just about, as we continue to develop and grow, the need to kind of do some of those things along with it, so.
Sure.
So what I'd like to suggest we do is consider item F and then maybe make an additional motion to direct Planning Commission to develop that interim zoning classification, because that is the trend out there. It is, people are, there, there's a, a big vacancy or lack of housing for lower, at lower cost, and it's driving a lot of people into some very dire situations. And, you know, anything that we can do to help mitigate that and not, not encourage the wrong things, but encourage the right things to happen, I think would be, would be well for us to do. So I would like to just suggest that maybe we consider this item F, and then somebody make a motion to direct the Planning Commission to adopt, develop and adopt a, a different zoning classification for future issues.
Sure. And I will work with Ms. Rock. I'm not sure, because she's gonna be very critical with, with developing that additional zoning classification. I'm not sure what staff time looks like, but we'll definitely be working at. We may need to bring in some outside assistance to help develop that zoning class, that additional zoning classification. So I, I definitely hear you. I, I wholeheartedly agree that we definitely need it. I'm just concerned about staff time being able to get it done, because that's, that's really what stymied us before.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve an ordinance changing the zoning classification from R4 single-family district to R5 multifamily on certain property located within the corporate city limits of the City of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
I'm in a second, can I make a comment along with my second?
Certainly, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna second it. I do think we need, and everybody agrees, we need that in-between. I appreciate Mr. Russell working with Irongate, because back in August when this was with Planning Commission, they, some Irongate residents contacted me, and I appreciate him working with them and addressing all of their concerns. So I'm comfortable enough, especially with the lot sizes, with going for this, even though you could technically put multifamily housing on here. That's why I'm gonna support it. I, with the intention and the understanding and the belief that we're, that's not gonna happen here. It's just to accommodate those smaller lot sizes.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second, and this is a roll call vote, so I'll ask to go, if there's, before we call for a vote, are there any other questions or comments to be made?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
I guess I, I just thought we were doing this backwards, that we, we should have done the, the change, allow the, the new zoning type before we allowed this, because now we're dependent on what we understand versus what's written, so. I'm gonna have to object to this one. Thank you.
Yeah. And I, I understand that sentiment. The, the issue that I think that we, you got here is you have a developer that wants to move forward with the development, and we're probably months away from being able to create that, that interim zoning, okay? But so, I, I just, I don't think in the interest of, of supporting the developer, we would be wise to do that, but that's my, my view.
We still have to approve the plat, right?
Yes, yeah, this is just a zoning change.
So if he doesn't come up with the plat he's talking about, we can deny his new plat.
So there is a fallback then, all right.
So, Mr. Mayor, the other thing that we may do, understanding your concerns, is you're, you're exactly right, John, and Justin made a good point. We do, we do request certain very contingencies and things like that in the plat, so we can reduce setbacks and things like that in the plat. So what we'll do, understanding that the intent is for single families, we'll ask the developer to put it in the plat that these will be single-family lots. And that way it will be, even though the zone allows... And that way it will be, even though the zone allows it, but when the plat comes to you, if Mr. Russell is true to his word that he's willing to do single-family homes, then we'll ask him to put that in the plat. And then that'll verify that those will only be single-family lots. So we'll, we'll do that.
Very good. I appreciate that input. Thank you. Okay. All right, any other questions or discussion? I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll for the vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David?
Aye.
Mr. Tyler Dean?
Aye.
Ms. Emily Hamburg?
Aye.
Mr. Justin Smith?
Aye.
Mr. John Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Jim Benage?
Aye.
And the motion carries six to zero, Mayor.
Okay, before we move on to item G, I would like to see if we could make a motion to direct the Planning Commission to develop with the consultation of attorney and engineers to, for a zoning classification that would allow for these smaller lot houses.
Question for the city attorney. Do we need to have a motion to do that? Or is that something staff can just work on under the suggestion of council?
A motion is not required. I did make a note, so we can discuss that with the Planning Commission.
Yeah. And I, and I appreciate that. And, and I, I kind of knew that. But the reason I wanted the motion is to, to give a formal record that we want this, we want this addressed, okay? Because I know they tried to do it before, and it appears that it didn't, didn't happen, so. Okay, that, that's my thinking.
Okay. I'll buy your argument, in which case I will make a motion that we direct the Planning Commission, isn't it?
Yes.
To create a new zoning district for single housing on smaller lots. One second.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a moment, please. Mr. Smith?
Just a question for our city attorney. I want to understand if she has any concerns about us doing a motion for this. I understand it's not required. But I think what I remember from prior discussions is there may be certain matters where the Planning Commission has more autonomy from the city council. And it, there are some things where it may not be appropriate for us to direct them because they kind of operate under their own statutory authority. I just want to make sure we're following all of the rules if we move forward with this motion, I guess.
They are going to have their own discussion. They are going to have their own deliberation. So I cannot promise you what will happen and when, because they are their own quasi-legislative body. But I understand what you're trying to accomplish as well, Mr. Mayor. You're trying to make a formal record of what you would like to see happen. And I'm glad to have that conversation with the Planning Commission.
So I guess just to be clear, you don't have any concerns with this as an action?
I don't, I don't have any concerns at this time. I just cannot promise you what that deliberation is going to be with the Planning Commission.
And, and I think that the wording that Mr. Welch put is, is broad enough that it doesn't tie their hands to any particular concept. So, that's my two cents worth. So I have a motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. David. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And that motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item G. Resolution concerning service license and permit fees. So each year, the city staff reviews fees to ensure they are appropriate, they cover, and the expenses associated with associated services. The proposed fees were discussed at our November workshop and are on the agenda this evening for final approval. Mr. Henry is here to address any questions.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I think you summarized it well enough. We discussed this in our last workshop, November workshop, and you had a few questions on a few areas, really minor changes to most of the areas. Court-appointed attorney fees, we, we saw an increase, so we just directly pass that on to the beneficial, benefiting party. The one discussion we did have was around rec fees, as discussed in the workshop. The last time we've adjusted our rec fees was in 2018. Between 2018 and 2023, according to the inflation calculator, I typed it in, it's about 3.92% inflation since then. So it's like 21% cumulative inflation from 2018 to 2023, if we want to go that way. But really what our rec staff did was took Valley Centers, Andover Maze, and Wichita YMCA rates and tried to put us in with, with those types of fees. And so we're more in line with them. One of the questions at the workshop was, are we turning away residents because of non-resident participation? And I asked Ashley and Brian this question, and really about 60% of participants, and it's program-dependent, are actual residents. So it's about a 60-40 split. And if you, if you know Brian and Ashley, they're not gonna turn away anybody. They're gonna try to create a new team or do what they can. So they don't remember the last time they've ever turned anybody away because a, a non-resident was in a slot that a resident could have been in. A lot of times, if you'll hear, I got turned away is because a deadline was passed or something, you know, they, they missed the cutoff. So that, that's the answer to that question. We did do some talking, and there was a few minor errors in the fee schedule presented, rec fee schedule presented in the workshop. And I think Councilmember Welch identified them, and I put them in my spreadsheet. Obviously, it's, it's, there's a lot of numbers up on the board, but it's one, page 150 of your packet. What I did is simply took those, the 2023 rates, which are actually the 2018, because we haven't touched them, and saw what the percent increase was and what the dollar increase was for residents and non-residents. There was five areas or six areas there where actually non-residents for, went, went, for five areas in red where residents went up more dollars than non-residents were. That was an error. It's supposed to be a pretty much even split. So what I did with the packet here before you is the, the orange column on the far right would be the one proposed. And that, what that does is make sure that residents and non-residents are each getting a dollar-for-dollar increase appropriately instead of one getting a better deal than the other. There's a few areas where we charge non-residents a little bit more. But I figured that was the will of the council, if we match what other area recreation centers are doing. Now, I will say, I did put together a simple 5% increase. If that's something you guys want to amend to, if you don't like the fact that we're trying to strategically place each program to what the fees are. But I imagine that's kind of what we did back in 2018 when we had already low rates, and we just increased it maybe by 3%. And so it was still, we didn't really fix the problem, we just increased it a little bit. So again, our recreation is a quality of life issue. Yes, we like to create recreation fees to help recover some of the costs. But it's one of those things where we, we would like to stay in line with other rec centers as far as fees. However, if you would like to do what I put option two, you're certainly allowed to amend option two when you pass the fee schedule, if you want a simple 5%. But I'll leave it up to you guys to discuss.
Well, personally, I like the, looking at what the market does, because those, what we call peanut butter spread of 5% are, are not always reflective of the market. And that can be a bad thing and a lot of situations. So that's my two cents worth. Mr. Welch, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I have beat up on a couple of departments here. And I, I'm not trying to be bad to anybody. And I think now we've come up with something that is a fair and competitive pricing. And I would like to thank staff for putting all the effort into that. And unless somebody else has something to say, I'd make a motion to approve the resolution concerning service license and permit fees within the corporate limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, as presented and authorized the mayor to sign.
Second.
I've motioned by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. Smith. Any additional questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor? I did want to make one comment. So as a, as a new volunteer coach, I, I think I can kind of second what Ted said about Ashley and Brian. They're not gonna turn away anybody. In fact, they're gonna call and bug people until they agree to be a coach, so that they don't have to cancel a team. So I really appreciate Ted putting in the effort, and Ashley and rec staff coming up with a new fee schedule. I do think it's important for us to try to stay competitive and collect more, more fees, so that we can, you know, cover some more of our costs. So I appreciate that. And I really appreciate our rec, because it's, it's amazing hearing how many people in our community utilize this, and also people from outside of our community. So I appreciate all your efforts, and I'll be supporting this.
Very good. And we appreciate your volunteer in this coach.
Yeah, how many more teams can you handle?
Just one.
Okay, any other discussion concerning item G? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Moving on to item H. So this is not a notification of retirement of Mr. Lasher. The governing body was aware, city manager was going to, considering retirement during the contract negotiations in 2022. He was asked to give six months' notice to adequately assure a replacement could be in place upon his departure. Mr. Lasher submitted notice of his intent to retire at our workshop on October 10th, 2023, with his last day being March 29, 2024. So action tonight formally recognizes receipt of the notification on October 10th, 2023, and allows our next item on the agenda. So any discussions? None, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, it's not quite six months, but I'll make a motion to approve Kyle Lasher's notification of retirement. He has received on October 10th, 2023, with his last day as city manager being March 29, 2024.
One second.
Motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. David. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. That motion carries five to zero. So moving on to item I. So this is considering employment agreement with Mr. Ted Henry as city manager. When the March 29, 2024, being Ty's last day, the governing body has spent the last two months discussing options for, options for his replacement. There are no state or federal laws that require certain actions to be taken when hiring a new city manager. Bel Air's personnel policy allows for promotions from within or hiring from outside. The city has used several methods for hiring staff. One has been advertising, accepting for applications, interviewing, and offering a position. Another has been posting, posting internally, holding interviews, and selecting the right candidate. Lastly, staff has simply promoted, been promoted from assistant to a supervisor position. So after much consideration, the governing body decided to interview Ted Henry, Assistant City Manager. The governing body has known Ted for seven years and felt there was no need to spend money on national search, with Ted being very capable and experienced to take on this role. Employment agreement was negotiated and is on the agenda for consideration. Employment agreement will take effect April 1st, 2024. Ted has stayed, will stay with the role of city assistant city manager, and will closely work with Ty until March 29, 2024. On April 1, 2024, the agreement will take effect, and Ted will become city manager at the April 2nd, 2024 council meeting. Ted will officially be appointed. Any questions, discussions concerning that issue?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
I'll make a motion to approve an employment agreement with Ted Henry as city manager with an effective date of April 1st, 2024, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Well, I got a motion by Mr. Smith in two seconds. I heard Ms. Hamburg first, so I'm gonna take her second. And any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Henry, on your promotion as city manager in, what, five months from now? Yeah, okay. Very good. Thank you. So next item, I'm gonna just couple of executive sessions. Do we need to take a break before that, or should we go on, get going? And how much time do we need also? I don't know that. We didn't discuss that. 60 minutes for, for a first one or a second one?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Yes, Mr.?
I'll make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Second.
Five-minute recess. Smith, second by Welch. I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Welch for a five-minute recess. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. We're gonna have a five-minute recess. How much time do you need for the second? second? Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order if everybody, uh, settle down and we'll call the meeting back to order, uh, for the recess and entertain a motion for a 30-minute executive session. If we need to extend it, we'll extend it in 15-minute increments.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to KSA 75-4319, exception for attorney-client privilege. Uh, consultation regarding Woodlawn Road Project contractual obligations. I want to invite the city manager, the assistant city manager, city engineer, attorney Neil Gosch, the city attorney. The meeting will be for a period of 30 minutes. An open meeting will resume at 8:57 in the council chambers.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Your motion for, uh, motion passes five to zero. We are in executive session for 30 minutes.
Okay, I'm going to call meeting back to order. We held an executive session. No binding action was taken. And I'll entertain a motion for 15 minute extension.
All move that we extend for 15 minutes, returning at 9:15.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Welsh to extend for 15 minutes and second by Mr. Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Foul same sign. We're in executive session for another 15 minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We held an executive session. No binding action was taken. We'll move on to the next item, which is another executive session, and I believe we need 15 minutes on this one. Is that correct? Okay, so I entertain a motion for 15-minute executive session on item two under 15. Anybody?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to the KSA 754319, exception for attorney-client privilege. Invite the city manager, the city attorney, and the assistant city manager. The meeting will be for a period of 15 minutes, and the open meeting will resume in city council chambers at 9:33 p.m.
Motion for Mr. Smith, and second by Mr. Dean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Executive session for 15 minutes.
I'm gonna call the meeting back to order, we held an executive session, no binding action was taken, and we're ready to move on to item sixteen A. So, December workshop, our regular scheduled workshop for December is December twelfth at six-thirty, and wanna make sure that works for everybody. And the only item as proposed is ERP software, and this is a critical tool, and we'll take the entire workshop, and it'll take a year to implement, I guarantee you. Every company I've ever seen it do, takes a year to get done. Okay? So, we okay with that? Okay, very good. Next item is December nineteenth, city council meeting is our last meeting in December, and for the year, and a few days before Christmas, so I wanna make sure we will have a quorum as some may be traveling. So, I wanna make sure that everybody's gonna be at that meeting, or if some are gonna be gone, please let us know now. If you don't know, I get it. So, it sounds like everybody's gonna be here, so we'll be able to have a quorum, and so that's good. All right, well, if that's all there is, then I'll move on to...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I did have one other question for discussion, it was a follow-up on, and I know Ann left, so I was hoping Ty maybe could have an update, a follow-up on just the timing of the temporary pavement markings that we had approved for Oliver.
Yeah, 'cause we haven't seen those come down.
Just kinda curious if there's any sort of indication from the contractor when that can occur.
Yeah, and thanks for your email, Tyler, 'cause Ann had forgot about that. She reached out to, I think it's TCS or whoever's gonna do that to find out when they were gonna get that done, so as soon as she finds out, I'll let you know.
They have their company right across the street there on Rock Road, that does that work, right?
Oh, yeah.
Can't remember that guy's name.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, Sillson.
Yeah, that could be an option, too.
Appreciate it, Ty, I know a lot of citizens have been curious, and they know we've taken action, so they're curious when that's gonna be done, so thank you.
Yeah, and rightfully so, it needs to be done, so, yeah, okay, very good, thank you for bringing that up. Any other issues?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Dean.
Second.
A second by Mr. David. Can't discuss this one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, good, we're adjourned. Everybody have a great day.